Well, welcome back. Before we get to Mr. Bennings testimony, I just would, I need to disclose that I did talk to Mr. Benning on the phone a few weeks ago. He'd contacted me and I don't think it'll influence anything that I may or may not make a decision on this evening, so.
And I have a disclosure that prior to my appointment to the City Council, I also had a discussion with a member of, somebody, a member of the audience, and again, that was prior to my appointment to the City Council, it was in the month of December.
Okay? Yes.
I also had a conversation with somebody on the telephone, and I don't think it'll be affecting my judgment on this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I also have two disclosures. One, I briefly discussed with Counselor Blakely before I was elected, it was just a in-passing. He just mentioned that he was at the PNZ meeting and it won't affect my decision at all as well. And then, also, there's a member of the audience that we talked briefly about, about the issue after church, and again, I don't think it'll sway my decision.
Okay. You want me to go with that? Mr. Benning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You go.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, hopefully you have got my, my submission to this, this soiree a week or so ago. I only intend to talk to the, the points that I have, have highlighted in black as we go through the slides. This is a summary of the presentation that you will see, a desired outcome, chronology of recent events to kind of set the stage, detailed arguments against the, the planning and zoning decision, and then my appeal to you. This is who I am. Note, please, that we built our retirement home at 1422 27th Avenue, taking the time between 2000, 2003, or 2002, 2003, to complete our home. This is the, the outcome. I didn't do this per point as, as my predecessor, I just loaded up at the front end. We'd like the City Council to reverse the, the Planning and Zoning Commission approval of CU 0713, the conditional use permit application. There are ser- serious concerns that were brought to the commission's attention by me and a large number of my neighbors that were not addressed or were glossed over at the meeting. There were documentary and procedural problems. The landowners' rights to the quiet enjoyment of their property is being abridged. Property values will be diminished, and as my predecessor said, there is no mitigation of that. There was no, no actual evidence given in the planning and zoning meeting that, that it would not happen. The six giant three-story buildings do not fit the area, as again, you saw, and I will show you pictures to that. Traffic concerns, safety and congestion issues that have been in place that will continue and get worse. The pedestrians will still have no sidewalks on either 17th Street and Vineyard Drive, as well as Stewart. Stormwater storage and ravine protection was not really addressed, but are still a real problem. The neighborhood input was ignored or made secondary to the consolidated, I'll, I'll get to that particular plan in the meeting, I, I have trouble with that acronym. Again, the, the public hearing notification that we got the weekend after Thanksgiving gave us very short time to, to digest what was going on. We got a sheet like this, and we got a plan picture like this that was in nice pink and green coloration. That's all, there is no dimensions, there's no nothing with this. The, the, the City Community Development Office had the final planning and zoning input available two days before the meeting. It was on, on Monday, the 9th of December, that we could pick up the, the package from the, the Community Development Office. It had the developer's package in it and contained the criteria for handout by, from the, the city planner. We had two days to, to mount a, a rebuttal to this, to this development. Again, we went through the, the public hearing process, I have a copy of the minutes that had already been mentioned. Again, the, the things went through. In that, there were five written statements read by the, the city planner against the development. There were 19 people spoke against the development. There were two neutrals that spoke. One, one that, that made mention of the, the need for affordable housing, the other was the manager of KLEW TV. In that, there was also quite a number of, of people that were at the meeting that had signed up to spoke, to speak, but other, other concerns or other, other things on their agenda didn't allow them to stay through the whole meeting. They closed the public hearing and they had a short discussion and voted to approve the, this, the conditional use permit. Okay. Since then, things that, that have gone on, including the development of the appeal argument. These are primarily documentary problems on the staff report. Section 37 dash 130, 163, this, this particular section has bothered me since the first time that I read through it in the staff report. Could you, can you put the, this projector on the screens, please? Okay. This goes through the, the sections of the staff report that deal with conditional use. If you notice 37 dash 128, the conditional uses permitted, I've highlighted number seven and number eight. This, Mr. Lean also mentioned in conjunction with the, the rightaways. Okay? The next page? Okay. We're talking here of lot size having to do with, with multifamily dwelling, the minimum lot area, et cetera, et cetera. I had also the same problem, which I will get to later. And again, 37 dash 30, talking about yards, okay, in the R2 zone. This has to do with, with front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And then finally, we get to this, this thing that I had such a problem with, having to do with the standards governing conditional use. Okay. Conditional use shall comply with the standards, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to read it to you, I assume that you can read. However, this, this thing, it appeared that, that, that somebody had written something here that was, was kind of meaningless in the context of what we were doing. So I was trying to fit this six-building development into the standards of the, the, of the code. And this is where I came to from that. Okay? Section 37, 128, the conditional uses permitted. The subparagraphs seven and eight permit multifamily dwelling meeting standards of 37, 124. 37, 29, lot size, calls out lot size for multi-family dwelling. Yards describe yards for front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And then finally, 37, 163, the standards governing the conditional uses, standards for multifamily dwelling. None of these paragraphs discuss multifamily, multi-building developments. The language of these sections use the singular form dwelling or building all through this thing. The logic of these sections are really a nonsense when trying to apply it to the six-building development proposed. Since multifamily, multi-building development is not explicitly discussed as a permitted use, I believe that Hillcrest Suites is not a permitted use in the R2 zone. Okay. Now if we can come back to, to this. Okay. I called out the purpose section for the, the, the city code on, on planning and zoning. The purpose of the, the chapter is to promote the orderly development of the city according to a comprehensive plan. And as Mr. Lean said, this, this plan was written in 1999. The section on the West, West Orchards is dated on, on the copy of September of 10. Plan is still out of date. This plan discusses Walmart being over on Thane Road as an economic driver. It mentions the, the buildings in the South Gate Plaza Center there as a employment center for regents. It also still mentions the, the, the garbage transfer station on O'Connor Road over by the airport. All of those have disappeared. Okay? This is a pretty thin document on which to base decisions. Okay? The population estimates which drive housing needs in the comprehensive plan. The current actual U.S. census in 2010 and the data estimates from 2012 place Lewiston's population at a level estimated in the plan at 2002. Actual housing units in 2010 exceeded the projected need of the comprehensive plan. Again, you can check that in, in my handout number five. Okay. Getting on down in the staff report on page nine, it starts talking of, of, of the age and affordability of housing in the city of Lewiston. We had been reading along in the, the, in the comprehensive plan. Then, without any attribution, the, the consolidated plan is, is introduced as a justification of the need for this development. This is the, the Community Development Block Grant Plan, not the comprehensive plan that, that is the, the driving document for planning and zoning. Then finally, the drainageway encroachment. The Hillcrest Suites Plan, a site plan, which was handout number three, certainly calls out a stormwater detention area in the bottom of the drainageway. Going on, as Mr. Lean pointed out, there's a discrepancy in the size of the property. The developer planes, claims it's 11.9 acres. The city staff says it's 9.4 acres. But I looked at the, the submittal, which is handout number three, that shows the, the concrete wall in the, the property to, to increase the buildable size. I took it to the county assessor's office and had their techs measure the builder, buildable area on that plan, and they say it's 7.3 acres. So there's, this discrepancy was, was not addressed at all by the planning and zoning people, even though in the minutes and in their, their, their finding of fact and their, reason statement, it still shows that that discrepancy is there and it should be, should be resolved. Okay? Next page, the, again, the discussion of the housing stock in following paragraph is advocating for the developer. It's based on the CDB GP. I have a problem with driving zoning decisions based on this plan. Again, now we're in the public, public hearing. The public testimony was taken but largely disregarded. It seemed as though the decision was in place before, before anyone stood up and spoke against the plan. A number of my neighbors that I've talked to since then had that feeling. Again, there was no questions regarding the size of the acre by the PNZ committee. There was the general acceptance of, of this, this development being separated from the rest of the area. And I'll show you some pictures that, that kind of contradict that. The reliance on the comprehensive plan desired future of the area for multifamily developer, even though it is still zoned R2 at this time. Conditions imposed. The original proposal was deficient in parking by 48 slots, okay, for RVs and boats. Conditions by the PNZ Commission removed this requirement, Mr. Mr. Lean argued against that, by the way. They removed the requirement and therefore added nonexistent green space. If the parking places weren't there, the relaxation of the permit doesn't add anything because it wasn't there in the first place. Then, the addition of architectural features to the end walls of the, these, my word, outsized buildings will not change the silhouette of these buildings at all. Okay. Appeal number two, and, and this, this goes to the, the big ones. These documents talk of, of, of people's rights, property rights, and the right to the private, or the, the quiet enjoyment of their property. Again, the, the comprehensive plan to conserve, stabilize the value of property, this is the purpose. All these, these, these documents deal with property rights and a limitation of the government to abridge that right. Now, the, the, the result of the, the, the public hearing said that there was no, no Testimony was given that the proposed development would devalue surrounding single-family home property values, however, no evidence or factual information of such was provided. Well, I attempted by, by going to the county assessor, I attempted to get factual information about that. But the assessor's office deals with things in the past. He can't tell me it's going to happen, he can tell me when it has happened, unfortunately. I had some, some very long talks with Mr. Anderson about this, this particular thing. However, I can give you some concrete examples. My neighbor across the street was one of the, the people who sent in a, a statement to the Planning and Zoning Committee. He said very clearly, if this is approved, I'm going to sell my house. The day after the Planning and Zoning Committee result was, was available, the property sign went up on his house. It hasn't sold yet, by the way, but it's still got the sign there. Now, this was, the day that the, the, the sign went up was the day that, or the Friday that it snowed pretty hard in Lewiston. And I was enjoying the snow, and I noticed that there were people looking at the house across the street. And I noticed one of the estate agents was a person that I had dealt with when we were looking for a house for, for our daughter. So I went out in the snow just to, to say hi to him, and we, we talked for a bit, and I said, you realize, don't you, that they're going to build 144 apartments right there on that hill? And to keep it clean, he said, oh, snap, now I've got to disclose that to my client. Now, disclosures to client doesn't happen, happen to happen when something good's going to happen. It happens when they discover a, a sinkhole next to your property, or it happens when somebody has committed suicide in the house and you have to tell them about this before you can sell it to them. So this is the way that properties will be diminished in value. And then finally, he said, what's going to happen is if they start this development and there's houses for sale, we'll bring people by to look, and they'll ask, well, what's this? Well, what this is, is 144 apartments to be built here. And the, the potential client will say, well, why don't you show me a place over in Reno Edition, or maybe over by the Country Club, or maybe out at Cuckoo Ridge? Now that's how, how property values are diminished. Okay. I'm not going to talk a lot to these, but this is another picture show. This is from in front of my property, looking up at where these, these buildings would be. If you see the lamppost there on the, on the left side, about halfway up the, the lamppost is where the base of a about 20-foot-high concrete retaining wall will be with a 30-foot-tall building on top of it. This is the, the, the neighborhood in the area, just probably, probably 30, 40 yards from where I was standing for the last picture. Shows the nature of the houses. Okay. This is from my neighbor's driveway. If you see this chimney on the top of the hill, that is the, the house that's currently on the, the, the property. Again, there'll be a, a 20-foot-high concrete wall here with a 30-foot-tall building on top of it. That would just about be as tall as those trees in the background. This, as, as Mr. Lean was talking about, this is Stewart, looking, looking southeast and the nature of the neighborhood. And to his, to his benefit, the curb gutter and sidewalk, you'll notice. Looking the other way, the same, same street, he's talking about this all the way down to that rather crooked tree is where 14th Street comes out on Stewart. This is, is standing about the base of that concrete wall on the property that I was, I was telling you about, looking across the ravine at our neighbor, neighborhood. This is that 10-unit apartment building that was mentioned in the staff report. And again, as, as Pat said, notice that this does not intrude on the, the neighborhood. It is down low, it, it fits very well. This is looking directly at it from Vineyard Drive and the, the neighborhood behind it. It doesn't impede the views and it's not out of character with the rest of the, of the area. Again, this now is out of one of my upstairs windows, looking at the 40-unit apartment building that was mentioned in the staff report. Notice that it also is, is done in such a way as to, to, to fit into the character of the rest of the neighborhood. This is 14th Street, looking north. Again, note sidewalks. The, the apartment buildings we were looking at are on the left, and my neighbor's houses are on the right. Now, this is an approximation, look, using the, the apartment house on Southway, this is an approximation of what this building would look like from the area that I took the first pictures from. And this is a duplication of one apparently that Mr. Lean had. Notice I had to back away quite a ways to be able to get it all in the viewfinder of the camera. Moving along, traffic and safety concerns and traffic congestion. In 2003, the Fairview Terrace traffic analysis was done and recommended mitigations to the traffic situation on 17th Street. 2007, there was a, a amendment requested to the Fairview Terrace planned utility development, a planned unit development on, on 17th Street there. The request was denied, at least partially, traffic issues were cited, and this request was to, to change eight single-family lots to eight duplexes, which would have added eight, eight family housing units at that point. But it was denied. Preliminary studies on, on CU 0713 cites data from 2005 and 2002 on Stewart and 17th Street. The mitigations from 2003 and 2007 have never been implemented. So now we're asked to add 144 apartment units to the traffic problem. Additional traffic from regents in the medical buildings on 23rd Avenue and the office buildings now on 23rd Avenue not been factored into the, the preliminary, preliminary TIA that was submitted with the conditional use permit. Okay. Pedestrian safety. Currently, there are no sidewalks on 7th Street, 17th Street from Vineyard Drive northbound. Now, Jennifer Junior High School has been in place for just over 50 years. The anniversary was last year, I believe. There's currently no sidewalk on the west side of the street or the, the Jennifer side of 17th Street, between 13th and 15th Avenue, and for, for large stretches between 17th and 19th Avenue, and from 23rd Avenue to the top of the hill. Now, Vineyard is the street that is just north of this proposed development. The top of the fill there is about 35 feet wide. Sidewalks would be needed, but where and paid for by whom? These are the two major streets that would have to be used by walking students going either to Jennifer Junior High or to McSorley Elementary. No conditions added to CU 0713 to remedy the situation. This one is, is probably a little early in, in the process, but I was interested in what, what stormwater would, would be a problem. We have some rather spectacular summer storms in the area. And I did some calculations, two of these are cited in, in handout number seven. There were, were two weather events in 2010, 2013, in which a half-inch rain was dumped on the area in 15 to 20 minutes. That would, would provide about 108,000 gallons of water on the area of Hillcrest Suites in 15 to 20 minutes. Okay. I'm not going to read this again, but again, the public hearing notice being late, the provision of the final staff report was late. Use of the material from the, the block grant plan without identifying it as its source. Make it appear that the Community Development Department is in a hurry to move this, this conditional use forward with as little neighborhood interference as possible. Has the goal of affordable housing overridden the property interests of the residents of the neighborhood? Now, the, the, the statements there at the bottom are, are directly from the, I believe it's paragraph 40 of the consolidated plan that was adopted in August. The current and ongoing activities of the Lewiston Community Development Department designed to promote and encourage affordable housing include: proactively and systematically seeking to rezone lands for affordable housing development; proactively seeking developers to construct affordable housing; facilitation and support of applications related to rezoning and construction for affordable housing. There are serious issues with the plan to rezone this parcel into the development presented as Hillcrest Suites. The building, buildable area is too small for the proposed buildings. Of course, the, the one that I, the, the logic of the, the, the code that came out 37, 163, in which the, the whole thing is not permitted in, in an R2 zone. The character of the development is alien to the neighborhood. Planning and zoning criteria was glossed over or ignored. The traffic, safety, stormwater issues, neighborhood input ignored. Okay? My appeal, stop this ill-advised encroachment on our neighborhood in the city of Lewiston. Pursuit of future affordable housing should not take precedence over the property rights of existing residents. Thank you. Now, one, one other thing. Mr. Blakely, you had a question earlier regarding the, the development on safe Southway? I don't believe that that required a rezoning in the fact that there is a number of, of multifamily developments in that area. Either, either four-unit apartments, some of them are two-unit duplexes, things like this. So just from looking at the area, I don't think it had to be rezoned for that development to happen? Questions?
Questions?
I have a question. On your argument number two, you cite the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Constitution, et cetera. In your opinion, do you think that by restricting the sale of this property, would we be infringing on the property rights of the buyer or the seller?
And your Mr.?
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson. I think that's a very good, good question. However, this is a, a conditional use permit. This is not affecting the sale of the property. The property, I, I know from personal experience, people that have attempted to buy that property go back 40-some-odd years. The property was not for sale. This is not a taking. If, if, if the owner wants to develop this as, as single-family homes or as duplexes as currently zoned, nobody has a problem with that. What we have a problem with is, is making this into a, a multifamily or a multiple-unit apartment complex that is totally out of character with the rest of the area. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question I have is, um, I hear all this going on and multifamily and affordable housing and, so, what if we built unaffordable housing there? Half a dozen unaffordable houses with families with two, three, four children in each of the families? With those families, those children have the same rights of protection that you're now arguing for a much larger complex? Would you still want the, the owners of those small residential lots to have sidewalks all the way down Stewart, all the way down Seventeenth?
The, the...
Because those, those children, my argument is those children would deserve the same protection as the children in a larger, or a larger unit like this.
I'm, I'm not denying that one bit. What I'm denying is, is the, the idea that, that we have to accommodate a hundred and forty-four apartments in an area that is currently zoned for single-family dwellings. Okay? And yes, if, if this was developed as single-family dwellings, they would have to curb gutter and sidewalk within the development. It still wouldn't help the problem that we have with Seventeenth Street. It wouldn't help with what's going on on, on Vineyard Drive. That is, is a problem that is going to exist there until somebody, uh, either, either does a, a, I think it's called a LID, okay, local, local improvement district and does curb gutter and sidewalks in areas where there are not, not property owners to do that. But no, you're quite right. They, they do deserve that. But I'm not arguing against that protection. What I'm arguing against is this outsized development in an area that is currently zoned for single-family dwellings or duplexes.
So, what I hear is, the problem is, are we going to put the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart?
There's a great deal of truth to what you just said. That's why I'm asking you to send it back to, to, uh, to planning and zoning disproved.
My, Mr. Mayor, my, one, one other comment is, I've heard two presentations now and it seems like we pick and choose out of the, uh, community development plan when we want to and we're in favor of it sometimes and then sometimes we're calling the document outdated and old, but other times we're, we're readily willing to quote it and use it when it's in our favor and call it outdated when it's not in our favor. And I've, just controversy and, and testimony like that. That's my one comment here. Tool that we're using is ours, I understand it. Comprehensive development plan goes through two thousand and twenty, if I'm correct. Am I correct on that? Two thousand and twenty?
Um, it's almost ninety-nine, so probably two thousand and nineteen, it's the twenty-first document.
Two thousand and nineteen is when the comprehensive plan will be, is, is, is the date.
Question there, sir. Is there anything that says that you can't update that? I, I, I saw in, on the website that the West Orchards part of that plan has been updated, uh, in, in September of ten. The rest of the plan, I believe, given, given adequate resources, could be brought up to date and make a reasonable plan about now.
And there have been amendments to it. There have been amendments to the...
Yeah, I, I know, that's what I'm saying. The areas that I, I quoted, even after the amendments, are still out of date.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Benning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have the representative from the developer here tonight. And he has brought some handouts. Should be appropriate to have him come up first and then... Okay. Mr. Hammond's still here.
I'm not Mr. Hammond.
No, you're not.
No.
[laughing].
But he's going to be following me. Uh, my name's Curtis Bloom. I live at three-eight-three-one Highway Eight, Troy, Idaho. And I'm with Bloom Construction. I'm here to speak in favor of, of upholding the unanimous ruling by the Planning and Zoning Committee, which granted the conditional use permit to allow the construction of an apartment complex known as Hillcrest Apartments. In addition to the original plan for Hillcrest Apartments, these conditions will be met. We will lower the density from a hundred and forty-four units allowed by the Planning and Zoning Commission to a hundred and twenty units. We will provide a walkway from Stewart Avenue, which will connect to Vineyard Drive. We will construct a covered twenty-four-by-twenty-four-foot picnic area as well as an outdoor play area. Bloom Construction has watched the city of Lewiston as it is continuing to grow and add jobs. We believe that the city of Lewiston needs a wide range of housing choices for continued growth to happen. We think that this project will be beneficial to the city as a whole. Besides the benefit of more housing choices, the tax benefit to the city will be substantial. It is my hope and desire that after careful consideration of the appeal, or appeals, that you will deny them and uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
Are, are we in the process of now just taking public comment or...
No, I think the developer deserves a shot at, at this.
Okay, I just didn't, I, sort of procedure question, really.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Hammond, Hammond Engineering and Development Company, Office five-twenty-eight Brydon Avenue here in Lewiston, working with and representing the developer. I believe that you have this handout that we prepared. Uh, I would like to, in my testimony, go over that. Uh, first, however, I would like to address the questions, concerns about the, the variability of property area calculations, estimates. This piece of property is in the Lewiston Vineyards Track Number One, which is a nineteen-twelve plat. God bless the old surveyor who prepared it, but there's significant inaccuracies in it. If you take the plat itself, the property that was purchased by my client totals up eleven-point-four-zero acres, not including street rights of ways and alleys. I have conducted a field survey, tying in all physical appurtenances, street locations, et cetera. And we have made an attempt to interpret the land that was purchased, the area of land that was, uh, purchased. And working with Mr. Hayhurst, city surveyor, my calculations indicate that there are actually nine-point-nine-nine acres of land that one could reasonably interpret from the old nineteen-twelve plat that was conveyed to my client. There are still some areas that we are investigating, uh, through deed descriptions, et cetera. Currently, that's the most accurate property area that we now have. So, if you use nine-point-nine-nine acres, for example, with a hundred and twenty units, uh, as my client stated, you're looking at twelve units per acre. If you use nine-point-five acres, uh, a hundred and twenty units, you're looking at twelve-point-six units per acre. So, I believe with the revised proposal scoped back from a hundred and forty-four units to a hundred and twenty units, the proposal is, uh, certainly in compliance with, uh, the decision by planning and zoning. Second item, first, are there any questions? Uh, second item, uh, appellate number one mentioned several times, concerns about views and view corridors. The purpose of my handout is to factually present elevations of the proposed apartment buildings, particularly as it res, as it refers to Stewart Avenue. The first sheet is a, uh, pictorial or three, three-dimensional drawing prepared from computer simulations based on actual elevations from the field, actual design elevations for the proposed site development. And just by the nature of the property topography, if you will go to the final sheet in this packet, there is a layout of the southerly-most vehicle parking area immediately north of Stewart. You will see on that document, uh, finished floor elevations, uh, that's the symbol FF on the two southerly-most buildings of seventy-four-point-five and elevation seventy-two-point-five. If you add vertically two floors of elevation to that, you will come up with a third-floor elevation of ninety-three-zero and ninety-one-zero. If you go to the elevations along the north side of Stewart Avenue, you'll see they range from eighty-six-point-zero on the west to ninety-point-zero on the east where the new proposed connection street is. For example, if you take the middle one, eighty-eight-zero, you're standing there, add five feet for a normal viewing height, that's elevation ninety-three. Ninety-three would be looking, if you looked horizontally towards the proposed apartment buildings, would be the same elevation as the third floor. So, long story short, this project will pocket, uh, I believe appellate number one used daylight basement approach, but the site plan will pocket the southerly-most buildings significantly below Stewart Avenue. And, uh, the numbers that I have given you are actual design elevations. I think that adequately illustrates my point. And of course, the reason we prepared the three-D computer simulation was if you look on the very first sheet, if you were standing behind that minivan and viewing north, northwest, you would indeed be looking into the third floor of the closest apartment building. Questions?
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
Um, in the, in the city's recommendations, one of the proposals was to lower the height of the buildings. Uh, if I'm correct, that was a proposal that the city has. And any of this information in front of us right now, does it reflect that?
It does, and it has not changed from the initial submittal.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay.
My point being is, when you actually look at details of the proposal, elevations, as I've illustrated, the view corridors to the northwest, to the north, are certainly going to be protected, in my opinion. Other questions? Appellate number one talked about pedestrian connections. If you look at the, uh, multi-colored sheet three, which shows the, uh, site plan identifies the proposed three phases, you will note along the west side of the proposed development, a twelve-foot-wide paved pathway connecting to Stewart Avenue going north, grade contouring down northwest, down to, and eventually connecting to Vineyard. One of the goals of this project is pedestrian connectivity, particularly looking at children's routes to school. We've had considerable discussion with Public Works City Staff on discussions and issues of no sidewalks on Vineyard. Those discussions are going to continue, and that's one of the goals of the project is to make or create to the best of participants' abilities safe routes to school. Those discussions will be ongoing. Certainly, appellate number one talked about the, the width of Stewart Avenue. I believe he used the right-of-way as twenty-six feet wide. Actually, uh, the dedicated Stewart right-of-way is sixty feet wide, as is Seventeenth Street, both having full sixty-foot-wide rights-of-ways. As part of project requirements, frontage improvements, uh, through the development agreement are required along these streets. Going to appellate number two, he mentioned, uh, stormwater storage in the bottom of the draw. Nothing farther from the truth. Uh, I think we, uh, certainly in our plan have considerable emphasis placed on retention of the conditions of the draw. That's a very valuable existing open space. And this twelve-foot-wide paved pathway that I mentioned earlier will be backed from the bottom of the draw considerably, but the goal is to maintain that open space area. As such, the stormwater detention facility to serve stormwater from this proposed development, the roofs, the, the paved parking lot, street, is at this point conceptual because we're not into design yet, but the concept is for stormwater swales that will be integrally compatible with the slope up significantly off the bottom of the draw. We will certainly integrate the stormwater detention facilities into a swale design, landscape swale design, so it does look like it belongs as part of this natural environment. Nothing farther from the truth than intention to put a stormwater detention basin in the bottom of the draw. Discussions about the height of the retaining wall, I think we heard presentations that the wall will be twenty-plus feet high. Not true, with the project density being scoped back from a hundred and forty-four units to a hundred and twenty units. The actual wall height will be starting at the south end, just off Stewart. You will see some steps on the proposed pathway going down from Stewart, then the beginning of the retaining wall on the west side. It will run from four feet to eight feet high from station one-plus-ninety to station four-plus-zero-zero, that's two-hundred-and-ten feet. Then, as you continue north along the wall line, as it crosses the head of a, a little swale, it will go to its maximum height of thirteen feet. Then it will diminish back down to eight, six, and four feet at the north end of the wall. Obviously, revision of density on this site has certainly helped a number of proposed features, one of which is the height of the retaining wall. Uh, in conclusion, a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, please. Um, in reduction of the population from one-forty-four to, uh, one-twenty-two, in the document that you're showing us here, does that accommodate that or this was based on one-forty-four?
No, that's based on one-twenty. Uh, there's information there about, I believe, the number of units. Also, another, I think, uh, significant benefit from transitioning from a hundred and forty-four units to a hundred and twenty units, the one-hundred-and-forty-four-unit proposal required a significant overflow parking area north of the facility. I think it behooves all of us to the best of our abilities to try to reduce the open pavement areas that are exposed and gather heat during the day. That overflow parking area has been completely eliminated by this revised site plan based on a hundred and twenty apartment units. So, in summary, the site design itself has certainly, I think, recognized concerns about viewscape. I personally have those concerns, but if you can grasp that the southerly end towards Stewart, the buildings are going to be pocketed down very significantly from the Stewart Avenue elevation, and they will be stepped down as you go north in the project. One of the controlling criteria is between apartment buildings, it's sixty feet from sidewalk to sidewalk, uh, our maximum parking gradient between those sidewalks is limited to about ten percent. So, that pretty much controls the step-down function, building to building, as you go north. There is approximately twelve-thousand cubic yards of excavation to pocket the south end of the project down and coming out to daylight at the north easterly-most building next to KLEW's access and Seventeenth Street. The westerly-most building, there will be embankment there retained by this retaining wall. It's about thirteen feet at its highest depth. So, there is an earthwork balance for the site, but hopefully from my submittal... So, there is an earthwork balance for the site, but hopefully from my submittal, you will gain an understanding that we're doing everything reasonably possible to mitigate and reduce and eliminate viewscape concerns. One thing appellate number one didn't share with you was the finished floor elevation of his house. I think that's pertinent information when you talk about viewscape to the north or northwest relative to this proposal. And in conclusion, the roof line of the southerlymost buildings, in my opinion, are not going to appear any higher than a single-family residence if that single-family residence' finished floor elevation was constructed at the elevation of Stewart Avenue from the viewpoint. So, I believe that after the planning and zoning conditional use permit hearing, the developer has, I think, responded very aggressively in looking at mitigation for the concerns that were expressed, and we believe we are achieving that. I do appreciate your time very, very much. I'm here to answer questions.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, hearing that, we'll take some public testimony.
We got one more.
Oh, okay.
Traffic engineer.
Traffic, okay. That might be good information.
My name is Sue Weaver. I'm the principal engineer at Sue Weaver and Associates. The office address is three-five-three-four Seventeenth Street in Lewiston. I've been a traffic engineer for just shy of thirty years. I've done numerous traffic studies, traffic impact studies, in the valley and the surrounding area. And I guess there's been a lot of misinformation about just what a traffic study involves, so I'd like to go through and just give a brief outline of what a traffic study involves. One of the first steps is assessing what's there right now. So, we go out and we video all the intersections and all the surrounding areas, the roads surrounding the project site. And then we do traffic counts that are current right today. And these include all the intersections and the turning moves of those intersections. Then, we gather back other background informations, the signals maybe, or accident information, or surface conditions of the roads. And then this information is analyzed. The next step is to figure out how many trips this existing project will generate. And there's been some, I would say gross exaggeration on how many trips this project will generate. And the reason for this is, most, if not all jurisdictions utilize an outline by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it's a highly detailed, highly complex analysis tool. And in that analysis tool is a publication called The Trip Generation Manual. It's a lookup book. And over the past thirty and forty years, they've done studies. For this particular one, it's called a mid-rise apartment. And so, there's hundreds of studies on mid-rise apartments where they actually send people out and count the number of trips entering and leaving, the time of day. And for a hundred and twenty units, we use, let me back up a minute. Generally, in the analysis, we use the peak hour, that we can expect the most trips entering and leaving for one hour of the project. So the PM peak hour for a hundred and twenty units will generate, according to the lookup manual for the Institute of Transportation Engineers, forty-seven trips. And this, the city engineer also has these manuals, if anyone wants to check this out. The daily total for this particular classification is not as specific. There's a general apartment classification. And the total trips, let me just look here. The total trips on a weekday for the whole apartment units, a hundred and twenty units, for a whole day, twenty-four hours, is approximately eight hundred. Then the next step is determining, okay, say on that peak hour, you have approximately fifty trips generated by the project. Some of those trips are entering, some of those trips are leaving. And then you have to determine, okay, if they're leaving, where are they going? And so, there's several models that can be used for that. You look at where our major employers are in the valley, and you say, okay, so, of those trips leaving, where are they going? Are they going northbound? So, a traffic study involves all of these numbers. It's not just a flat one thousand trips being generated by this unit. Let's see, what else do we need to talk about? Once we have the background information, once we have the project information, those two are married together, and another analysis is done to see what the level of service will be for the adjacent roadways. That level of service can go from A, which is absolutely open space, ready-to-go roads, or it can be level of service F, which is gridlock. We rarely see gridlock in this area, mainly because people are smarter than that and pick a different road. And now that we have those two together, then we project what this project, plus the background information, will be like in twenty years, and we reanalyze it all over again. So it's not just a two-page hand-in that is assumptions. There's some detailed analysis here. There's been a lot of talk about Stewart being a collector and the curb and gutter, and I think those have been talked about enough, and the developer is talking to city about that. Do you have any questions about traffic analysis? It is just, this is just a preliminary. What you have in your handout is not a traffic analysis, it's just a preliminary number of the expected trips generated by the project. Any other questions? Okay, and then, when all of the analysis is done, if it's determined that the project will negatively impact the streets, then I'll make recommendations and a conclusion for mitigation. And you just don't know until we get all of the analysis done what those might be. In the past, on other projects, some of the mitigation may be one-way entrance, a ride-in, ride-out, or it might be a bulb out to shorten a pedestrian crossing. On this project also, I failed to mention, it's going, we've talked about putting an internal bus stop for transit, transit stops internal to the project. So, and then the pedestrians have been addressed already, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. So we still have a bunch of people here that want to talk. I guess I would like to emphasize is, we've heard a lot of testimony here tonight. I don't know that we're going to get to address every concern that's been brought up. We have a lot of testimony that's been provided to us from the public hearing process already. We've heard two lengthy presentations, so if anybody here has, didn't testify at the PNZ, or if you have something new to add to the discussion, we certainly would like to hear it. And if you want to line up, I guess, again, since we've got a lot of people here, we'd like to get through this and hear what you have to say. If you just want to agree with what your neighbor has to say, please come up, give your name and address and say, I agree with what Mr. Lean said, or Mr. Benning, or what
I'm Sharon Richardson, and I live at twenty-six-fourteenth Seventeenth Street. I think I'm the only one that lives on Seventeenth Street. I am on the corner of Seventeenth and Vineyard Drive, and right beside Clue TV. And I turn in to my driveway from Seventeenth, when I come down, there's a lot of times people slam on their brakes, or swerve around me, sorry, to avoid smacking me, because they, and it happens all the time, because I hear screeches all the time. And my daughter-in-law sister got ran into coming into my driveway, and it just happens a lot right there at that corner. There's, it's not wide enough, you know, I mean, coming up the hill, they have a turn, you know, I mean, you don't have the problem so much as turning, but we don't have going down the hill, it's one-way. So I think, you know, you're saying the carrot before the cart, or whatever, that that road has to be changed for a turn signal, turning, or something, because there is just accidents there. And I don't know where they're going to put all these sidewalks either. Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess we'll close this public hearing. Where to start? Counselors, we've got?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have a chance of rebuttal? I was led to believe that we would have a short period for rebuttal.
Shall I reopen the public hearing?
No, I think you just, you can allow him to have rebuttal, he's the appellate.
Okay. Briefly, if you could, Mr. Lean.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. One of the council members, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, sir, in the white shirt.
Blakey, Bob?
You had asked about, you'd asked a question about, what if we were just building houses in that field, what kind of rights would people have? And from my perspective, if we're building houses in that field, we're not here. It's zoned R2, they can do whatever they want within the zone. There was also a comment made about picking and choosing within the comprehensive plan. I would just like to make a couple of statements. The city planner made a statement that the comprehensive plan substantially supports the plan development. My comments from the comprehensive plan were the facts within the comprehensive plan that did not support that. One of the builders gave comment that they had changed the development from a hundred and forty-four units to a hundred and twenty units. I think that's a step in the right direction. I'm happy to hear that. It cuts down on the density. We still have an issue of how big of a space do we have to build on here? They're making their assumptions based on a hundred, or nine-point-nine-nine acres. The city calculated nine-point-four acres. One of my appeal criteria was based on the public right-of-way on Stewart Avenue being non-improved, that the zone, or the code actually calls for eight-point-seven. Mr. Hammond made a comment about my comment. He said that I said that Stewart was twenty-six feet wide. Actually, I said Stewart was twenty-eight feet wide. And further, I said that I went out and measured it pavement edge to pavement edge. So I don't dispute the fact, the Stewart has a sixty-foot right-of-way, but what I'm telling you is pavement to pavement is twenty-eight feet. So we got thirty-two feet of work to do. Or we got twenty-two feet of work to do, if I'm doing my math right, to get fifty feet. That was the point that I was trying to make. And based on that, it's a non-improved right-of-way. Mr. Hammond made comments about the views and the size of the buildings. It's wonderful to hear. I wish I would have heard it at the comprehensive plan meeting. I think it would have been good information to have. Ms. Weaver gave some information on the traffic analysis. Again, I think it's wonderful information to have. I wish we would have had it at the comprehensive plan public hearing. I think it's information that we should have had. I think it's work that should have been done. So let's go do it, and let's go have a public hearing on a comprehensive plan that includes that information. That way, we can take the information in the traffic analysis, we can gauge what the impacts are, and we can put conditions in the conditional use permit to mitigate those. And we can ensure that the people in those neighborhoods are protected. Ms. Weaver made a comment that the pedestrian issue has been resolved. Could I get the overhead to work, please? This is the rendering that I was given at the comprehensive plan meeting, it represents a hundred and forty-four units. I don't know how the builder intends to get from a hundred and forty-four to a hundred and twenty. It looks like there's still six buildings. The point that I wanted to make is, the engineer, Mr. Hammond, as well as the traffic analyst, talked about a pedestrian path from Stewart to Vineyard. That's going south to north in this direction, along the edge of the property. I don't dispute that at all. I think it's a wonderful thing to have. It'll let people get through the property between Stewart and Vineyard. My issue is right here. That applicant is responsible for curb and sidewalk along that edge of the property, that's it. That sidewalk's going to end in the top of that ravine, and there are eleven hundred feet of unimproved roadway to the west on Stewart Avenue with no sidewalk, not to the north, to the west. That's the Collector Street. It's not improved, and there is no sidewalk. Simple solution, add a condition to the conditional use permit that requires the builder to improve the road. Not just in front of his development, but along the Collector Street. Those apartments are going to be there for fifty years, or more. They're going to generate millions of dollars in income for that builder. And I can show you the calculations if you would like, but I don't want to take up your time unnecessarily. The builder needs to invest in the public safety, and that is why I asked that a condition be added to put that sidewalk in. I think that's all I have. Thank you again for your time. I know that this is a long process. I'd like to point out that it's four hours for you, it's the rest of my life. All right? Thank you.
Point taken. Mr. Benning?
Again, I'll be brief. The discussion of the traffic analysis, I have no trouble with the traffic analysis. What I have trouble with is first, a statement that was made in the planning and zoning committee meeting, that the problems will be mitigated through a traffic analysis. Well, I think I demonstrated pretty clearly that from two thousand and three, there was a traffic analysis that showed it needed mitigation. Two thousand and seven, it needed mitigation. What I have trouble with is there's no shovels on the ground doing that mitigation. Okay? Secondly, we ask that CU zero-seven dash thirteen be reversed. The engineer for the developer has retreated from a hundred and forty-four units to a hundred and twenty units. And as Mr. Lean said, I think that's a good start. I still have serious reservations about the whole conditional use permitting of a multi-unit, multifamily development in an R2 zone. I don't think it's correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. So... So, counsel? Counselor Daniel?
I have gotten a lot of information tonight, and I honestly would like a little bit of time to go over, especially this packet that was presented to us by Mr. Lean. I don't know if there's a way to continue this, or if we have to motion postpone, or what the proper procedure was, but I don't know how the council would feel about that. I'd like to continue to review this a little bit.
Counselor Randall?
I'd like to propose tabling a final decision on this until our next regular council meeting.
Which would be the 10th?
Yes, 10th February.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Daniel?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I really did pay attention to both of those presentations. There is a lot of good information, and I will be asking staff a lot of questions based off of that. And I also want everybody to know that, though I am keeping the neighbors in mind for this area, I'm also keeping in mind the potential for 144 families, 120 families, to find a good home to live in, so that's it.
And I agree, I think, you know, I don't know that Mr. Plaskin's had time to digest all that. I know we certainly have just presented with Mr. Lean's information tonight. We got Mr. Benning's last week with our packets, so I did have time to read that. And they touched on some of the same things, but we have heard a lot of information, and, you know, obviously, this is an issue that means a lot to a lot of people in this community, as judged by the turnout we've had here tonight. So I don't think any of us here take this decision lightly, and I think in order to make a more thoughtful, reasoned decision, and have some options planned, presented to us anyways, I would be in favor of tabling a final decision until the February 10th meeting. I mean, keep in mind, this is, there's several options at the council's disposal. You can approve, we can deny, we can ask them to withdraw it and come up with a new one because of the change in the scope of the project. There's a lot of options, and I think the only fair to staff to allow them to sit down, perhaps, bring us a summary, if you will, of everything that we've heard here, so that we can make that reasoned decision, so. Anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, I always prefer that if you're communicating with staff, that staff communicate with you all at the same time. So I would prefer that, if council wants information from staff, that they prepare a report from you with information that might have been elicited from tonight, and then information that they're willing to give you, as opposed to trying to answer individual questions. If you have individual questions, maybe funnel them all, either through the city manager or through Mr. Plaskon, and then we can get them all answered at one time.
Yeah. Yes, Counselor?
I know it's unusual, but there's a lady in the back that has a question, continues...
I just want to know, on the February 10th meeting, are we able to come and be a part of it?
Absolutely.
Be a part of it. The testimony portion of it has been closed. We've closed the public hearings, so we'll be more into deliberating, you know, what we've gleaned here from this meeting tonight, along, you know, and reconciling it with the Planning and Zoning meetings and whatnot, so.
But we can comment on that.
Certainly.
And you can come and comment before the meeting.
And you can come and comment at the, you know, public comments, you know, before the meeting, where you can stay at home, and on your couch, and watch us on TV.
Well, we'll see.
No, we like to have people here, believe me. We don't always get crowds. So, any other discussion? Well, with that, all those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, everybody, again, for coming. Okay, I guess we'll give a second or two to clear the room here. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that anybody would like to be moved to the active agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to read the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Check it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Approving the minutes of the January 6, 2014, and the January 13, 2014, regular meetings. Accepting the minutes of the December 5, 2013 Historic Preservation Commission, November 20th Parks and Recreation Commission, December 11, 2013 Planning and Zoning Commission, and the January 8, 2014 Transportation Advisory Commission. Rejecting all bids for the South Shore pump station upgrades and authorizing the project to be rebid. Approving Resolution 2014-2 by title only. A resolution approving an extension agreement between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Coleman Oil Incorporated and Idaho Corporation for the provision of fuel until February 18, 2015. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable for December 30, 2013, through January 2, 2014, in the amount of $569,243.08, and January 3 through January 16, 2014, in the amount of $1,690,265.56, and this excludes payments to Albertsons.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now onto the active agenda. One lonely item: vouchers payable to Albertsons. Entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons, with Counselor Daniel abstaining?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Do we need to read it? Oh. For $22.44.
I can read it.
Okay. Thank you.
I certainly can.
No, that's fine. Okay, on to unfinished and new business. Counselor comments? Any comments tonight, counselors? Counselor Mail, now?
Just in case any of the people who put on the Martin Luther King Idaho Human Rights Day are watching at home, it was very well organized and well put together, and they did a very good job. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just one, you know, again, it's been a long time since we've had a lengthy meeting. They always seem to funnel around planning and zoning issues. Having done four years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Lord knows, I've been through a bunch of them. They're long meetings, and Mr. Lean did make a comment, you know, for us, it's a few hours, for him, it's a lifetime, and I do appreciate that thought. These, it's an important public process that people get involved in, and, because I've had people come up and say, "Hey, when the heck does that happen? I've got some guy building this thing next to my house." Well, things are publicized, and there are signs put up around town and stuff like that. Project this magnitude, maybe we could have done a better idea of communicating in the neighborhood, I don't know. I don't think we did anything outside of what state statute requires us to do, but maybe that's something we'll need to take a look at. Yes?
I'd like to also comment on how much I appreciate the big turnout we had this evening. I really appreciate when the citizens get involved.
You bet. Any other comments? Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a few things I wanted to go over. One is, I was contacted by Beautiful Downtown Lewiston, and it appears that we overlooked them when we were looking at creating a council liaison for their organization. They may not be an official group that is listed within our official listing, but they did ask if someone from the council would be interested in, you know, working with the Beautiful Downtown Lewiston group and serving as a liaison for their meetings.
When do they typically meet? Guess we'll have to find that out.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a regular meeting date. I assume that they do, but Brianne Durham did get ahold of us, and I'm sure it was just an oversight. Mr. Cannon was the representative while he was in office, and so if someone is interested, just let me know, and then I'll get you the particulars, and as to when BDL meets on a regular basis, and we can get somebody down there to interface with them.
Okay.
Okay? Then we have a number of upcoming meetings, of course. This week, there will be a number of staff and council members that will be at the Association of Idaho City Winter Meetings in Boise, which start tomorrow. We'll then have our work session on February 3. That'll be at 3:00 PM at City Hall. We'll have a number of contracts to review. One will be our new property liability insurance contract, a joint powers agreement with ICRIMP, which is the insurance pool established in Idaho that most cities and counties participate in for property liability coverage. We'll be looking at the transfer station purchase agreement. We'll be looking at the Lata sanitation agreements for the new yard waste and biosolids composting operation, and we'll be looking at the new contract for the Lewiston Orchards Sanitary or Sewer District. So it'll be an interesting meeting, you know, a lot of contracts to look at, but that was one of the issues I know Counselor Daniel raised with me a while back, just to say, you know, we'd like to have some time to sit down and look at these things before we actually have to take them to a formal approval process. So we'll be doing that at the 3rd. February 10, just before our council meeting, we'll have a 4 o'clock special meeting to receive the audit presentation from our auditing firm. And then last but not least, through no fault of anybody's, we have been trying to find a day that works for everybody for our kickoff budget session this year, and it looks like we just aren't going to be able to arrange it so everyone can be there. So our original date is still the date that we are going to look at, which is February 22. It's a Saturday, like it was last year, from about 8 to 1 or so, at the police training facility on 16th. I think that's it.
Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
The Audit Committee decided to approve Mr. Mike Tatko. He's the general manager for Vista to fill a vacancy on the Audit Committee. Mr. Fry won't be eligible to reapply for one year as per the bylaws of the committee, so.
Okay. We have a nomination?
Yeah.
A second for Mr. Tatko?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Did you have one?
Yeah, I bring forward the name of Jill Carlson-Balmer for Parks and Rec.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and I have a couple. Apparently, I think I might have dropped the ball a little bit. I know we discussed this at a work session. We had a couple. Rhett and Wendy Dezenner had indicated interest and filled out the application for the Urban Forestry and Cemetery Commission. And they were at the meeting in September, and I know we talked about it, but I think it was at a work session, beginning of October, and I guess I didn't make that appointment. Basically, what we're talking about is the two of them would kind of share the chair, if you will. It's only one vote, but they have their own particular interests, and neither one of them can make the meeting all the time. We have had this in the past, it's been allowed. I don't have any problem with that. I've known both those folks for a long time, and they've...
So they're both currently on the commission?
No, I don't think we officially, Carrie and I, I looked through minutes, and I couldn't find it, and she couldn't find it either, so I don't think we ever officially approved. So I would ask...
Make a motion to approve...
Okay.
...the appointment, too.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it's going to be two people with one seat, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries seven to zero. The other one I have is Joe Anderson, who's also on the Urban Forestry and Cemetery Commission. Joe's one of the licensed arborists that we use here in the city. He's been on the commission for quite a few years, and knowledgeable, very knowledgeable, and has taken a bit of an interest in the cemetery as well. It's not just all about the trees, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint Joe.
Second.
You've got to make the motion.
I'm in for the reappointment.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Joe Anderson? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and any other? Yes?
I just want to make an announcement that there is an opening for the Transportation Advisory Commission, and all citizens are welcome to apply, and they need to see the city clerk, Carrie Ravencroft.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We also have two vacancies on the Solid Waste Commission.
Okay.
And they're welcome, anyone's welcome to apply.
And I guess, yes?
Just a reminder, that quite some time ago, I submitted a request for reappointment from Mike Nakarado and Mr. Fry for the TAC, just because their terms came up, so...
He probably sent it to me. I'll forward it in order.
Okay.
Thanks.
We can address that at a future meeting. Anything else? Work session agenda topics? Mr. Bennett's already touched on our next work session. Anything anybody else would like to have brought forward, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Question on our upcoming work session. In the discussion with, about the port contract...
Well, is it purchase agreement?
Purchase agreement, excuse me, purchase agreement. Will we have a representative from the port there to answer any questions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I expect the Port Director, Dave Doringstall, to be there.
Thank you.
I do have one. I think we kind of discussed, maybe we'd, maybe get an update on the URA at our March work session.
We have that scheduled. I think it's scheduled for the April work session.
April?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Fine.
Okay.
The URA is going to be meeting, as we announced earlier, twice a month, beginning in February, February, March, April into May, in order to complete its work on reviewing the current urban renewal plan and the project list, to determine whether or not there need to be any additional projects considered in any of the revenue allocation areas, and if there need to be any actual modifications to the language of the plan in going forward with the urban renewal process. So they anticipate to have that done by May, and then to bring that report to the council.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know there's a lot of topics on the February work session, but is there any reason why we couldn't get that moved up a little bit earlier in March, so that we can, I mean, we'll be three months in, and we haven't even had a single early discussion as a council about URA and...
Yeah, let me talk. I'll be the proxy at next week's meeting, when Administrative Service Director Marshall will be out of town, so I'll bring that up with the board, and see if we can do it, and staff, actually, I should, it's really more based on Laura's time. If we can do that in March, you know, we've got, I've already got, we're filling up, which brings me to another question I was going to ask the council. Thank you for reminding me, which is, perhaps, you might want to consider having more frequent work sessions. One a month makes it real tough to get to some of these items. We don't have to have two every month, but maybe one month one, and one month two, or something like that, so we could have another meeting opportunity to catch up on some of these things. I know there are a lot of issues that are going to be coming up, and because many of the council members are not familiar with... the council members are not familiar with many of these issues, we might bring things to a work session that maybe ordinarily we wouldn't because they're... It's new territory. So just something for you to think about.
Okay.
If you would like to have more frequent work sessions.
Sounds good. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, RE litigation per Idaho Code Section 67-23451F.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.